Usually do with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the meeting minutes from our last meeting in your packet. Were there any corrections or updates?
We haven't seen them.
We're not able to access them right now.
Oh, you can't access them?
I did access them and looked them over and I didn't see anything that I thought needed to be changed.
Okay.
So.
Listen, I'm old school. I got them on paper if you want to see it. The old guy.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second since I read them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, they will go as printed. Next up, we have the declaratory resolution from the Westgate RCE. Bob, I see you are here. We have Jacob Savage for Momentum as well. You're welcome to speak. Yes, Bob.
Morning, everybody. Great to be here. As you said, you know, Brant is here with Boz, Jacob with Savage, Jacob Savage with Momentum, excuse me. So, last meeting, we sort of framed the opportunity here, the project there at Westgate. Great, great opportunity coming off the heels of Kratos, another wonderful project. We decided to go forward, so here we are considering a declaratory resolution. That kind of frames up the matter for this morning and happy to share or take any questions. And I don't know, Jacob, is there anything new that?
Um, I, yeah, thank you. Thank you, committee. Morning.
Just, nothing really further technically, just an update on the progress of the project.
So, I'm the overall project lead, project manager for the effort. So, just to give an update, we are still in the design phase. We recently submitted our 60% design deliverable. Momentum is designing the facility and all of the, all the components, all the safety mechanisms, everything, the shielding in-house. So, that's a design team we've got in Colorado. We're working closely with them and the vendor providing the GFE, the government equipment. The 60% design went very well. Full team met in Colorado. Very minimal comments coming out of that. We anticipate here in about six weeks, 75% design followed very quickly by 90 and then 100%. So, project continues to progress very well. Very happy with the design team. We've already initiated our talks with the state to apply for our registration, our device registration with the state of Indiana, as well as the Nuclear Regulatory Commission. We've already initiated our conversations with them to apply for our 10 CFR 30 license, our material byproduct license with them. And just generally, schedule seems to be going well. We're actually clearing trees this week on the parcel. So, it's, yeah.
I was up there.
We've got a lot of questions. Anytime there's work going on, you know, you get questions. But just generally, very happy with the progress. Happy to answer any questions that you may have following the first meeting.
You very much. Does anyone have any questions from Mr. Savage? Okay, appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Grant, do we need to read the resolution or?
It's attached.
Okay.
It's fairly standard, but.
Okay.
If you would, please.
Okay, this is a declaratory resolution designating a portion of Davis County as an economic revitalization area specific to Amintum Services. Whereas, the County Council of Davis County has determined that certain real property located in the county at Southeast State Road 558, south of 558 and on 1400 East in Oden, Indiana, the title held by Westgate RCE LLC as specified in the application for tax abatement filed by Amintum Services, with a map and description which is attached to, should be attached to this resolution, should be designated as an economic revitalization area under and pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1-1 as amended. And whereas, the council hereby finds that the real estate is an area which has become undesirable for normal development and occupancy due to a development, due to a lack of development or other factors which have prevented a normal development of property or use of property, and that the designation of said area as an economic revitalization area would enhance the opportunity for the creation of new jobs and investment. And whereas, Westgate RCE and Amintum anticipate increases in the assessed value of the real estate and anticipate making significant investment of equipment and personal property for the proposed redevelopment of the subject property and has submitted documents attached as included A and B, which includes a statement of benefits for the real property and the personal property. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of Davis County, Indiana. Number one, the real estate is hereby designated an economic revitalization area within the meaning of IC 6-1.1-12.1. Number two, notice of the adoption substance of this resolution and all other documents and disclosures required by Indiana Code shall be duly published in accordance with Indiana Code 5-3-1, which notice shall state a date for a public hearing on this resolution, and that on said date, after hearing objections and remonstrances and considering evidence thereon, this council will take final action determining whether the qualifications for an economic revitalization area have been met and confirming, modifying and confirming, or rescinding this resolution. Number three, copy of the above referenced notice shall be filed with the officers of each taxing unit that has authority to levy property taxes in the geographic area, which is hereby designated as an economic revitalization area, at least 10 days prior to the public hearing on this resolution, adopted this day by the County Council. So, this is the second step. You all met and heard from this company and approved moving forward with this step. And there'll be a final step, as mentioned there, which would be confirmatory.
Any questions? If not, we would need a motion to accept as read.
So, move.
Okay, Tony made the motion, second by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Yes, Darren.
I do have a question regarding the, regarding the property there. Will that be enclosed or fenced? Will it be a secure area to, as far as keeping general public out? Will it be the whole entire property or just your main facility?
This is my right of.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we have the notice of the Wage Committee meeting dates, which is Thursday, March 20th and Friday, March 21st. On the committee was Tony, Tom, Darren and myself. We'll be meeting with department heads to talk to them individually over those two-day periods. Okay, next up, Sheriff's Department. There is an additional appropriation request for $2,500. Gary?
Yeah, that's, that's our return of fugitive fund. We've hit it pretty hard so far this year. I'm just trying to get it up whole because usually, we've always used that fund in the past to hire a transportation company. We recently picked up an inmate from San Diego, California, and it was like seven grand to get him back here with some of those companies. So, we determined it to be a cheaper way to go to buy tickets for our three people. But did get into it early and we don't really know when we're going to need those. So, I'd just like to make it whole again as soon as that makes.
Any questions for Gary?
Didn't get much further away, could he?
Well, he didn't come back for court, so I'm gonna, he's got a bond that he paid whenever he got back here, so I'm gonna go after that whenever, to go get, again, try to get it replenished. I think that's what the, we've never really done that before, but we never spend a thousand dollars to go. And that, that don't include their salaries, but that's just the airline ticket.
Look for a motion?
Move to approve.
Tom made the motion, second by Mike Myers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And we just got back from Sioux Falls, South Dakota with one, and I think we got another one out there to go get. All right, thanks.
We also have a request from the Commissioners of the DCH contract for the ambulance service and an additional $200,000. That was approved at the Commissioners' meeting on January 28th, 2025. Any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion. Yes?
Only question I got is, if it's approved, where are we going to pull the money from? Is there a designation?
Is there a designation of where they were pulling that?
Out of Jim.
It's out of the general fund, out of the Commissioners' budget.
Out of the general fund?
Yeah, it's in the general fund.
Okay.
It, it's, we, all the contracted services is budgeted within the Commissioners' budget. And so, this is making that whole so that we can make the payment for the new contract.
Okay, I was just curious if it was coming out of another bucket or something?
No, this is the additional, asking to put it in there to spend.
What is the total dollar amount of the contract now? 700?
Yes, it went from 595 to 795.
So, does that, so that, does that imply this will be a one-time? Are we going to be looking at additional request further into the year?
Well, that's a tour like we have to take care of it and we get our, we get the financials. I don't think there'll be anything for a couple of years or so, but if, if DCH says here it is, we're out. A lot of money.
Almost twice, probably twice that.
You know, because not only from the financial standpoint, but they take care of all the administrative and everything. So, that's not something that we want to venture into. So, we will get their financials every month.
Yeah.
So.
See that?
That's why you're asking.
Yeah, I know, because.
You can look at any county. I mean, you got the safety tax in most of the counties around us, which is what's paying for it. And that's been brought to this board before and we've always said, no new money, no new tax. Depending on what Senate Bill One does, obviously, that may be something we have to unfortunately look at, but.
Yeah, I just.
It's a service we have to provide in some manner, whether the county does it or we contract with somebody. And really, to be honest, there aren't a lot of companies out there that do it. There's not a lot of money doing it. Hospital was interested a few years ago and Southwest was interested in getting out, so.
I, again, my whole point was just if, is this, is this a, something we're going to be seeing again in a few months down the road or what? So, anyway, but I get, understand that.
Yeah, we won't see it again this year.
Okay.
Because Commissioners have already stated that, so.
All right.
Maybe something that's looked at next year, but this is it for the year.
Might be something to be looked at at budget time for next year. Might be something to be looked at at budget time this fall for next year.
I thought we actually corrected it during the budget time this year, that we added the $2,000.
Contract did not go before the Commissioners until this year.
Okay.
Okay, so.
We had it in the budget, though?
I don't believe so.
They was talking.
We didn't put it in.
We didn't put it in.
Okay.
Michael Taylor, I think, was not necessarily in favor and he waited till the new Commissioners came on to put it before them.
I understand. Thank you.
Okay, so any more questions? If not, I look for a motion to approve.
I move to approve.
Um, made the motion?
Second.
Second by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Next up, Superior Court. Expert fees. Mr. Murray, Judge Murray, welcome.
She says expert as you're walking up.
When you're prosecutor, you get asked for like exciting stuff like guns and drug money and stuff. This is like when you pay for a hot water heater or everything's like super boring. This is, we've had a couple of serious mental health issue cases and defense attorneys have an absolute right to explore whether there's a viable defense in that perhaps the person didn't know what they were doing at the time. They allegedly committed the crime or, or they competent to state trial. Just had kind of the same situation that Gary was in with having to transport people. Just had a lot more action popped into this. Serious crimes have been alleged and there is money that has to be provided out. Funds for experts. We have a couple that we use. There's not a lot of negotiation there. There's not a lot of insurance there that you can just say, hey, we'll just put this on this guy's Medicare plan or whatever. So, that's my ask for now. Not going to tell you this is it for the rest of the year because I can't finish it March, but I would appreciate whatever duration you might have it. I'm happy to answer.
How far away do you have to go for those experts?
Not that far. Vincent's in Jasper. So, that's one of the things that I like. But it's, it's one of those non-discretionary, if people want it, they, they absolutely. And I will say that our defense bar does a pretty good job of only doing this in serious cases where there's actually some. They don't just say, I don't know what to do with this case, so I'll ask for a mental competency evaluation. That's not happening. You high-profile cases, or that's a critical part of the defense. I'm obligated to pay for it. We outkicked our coverage. We'll be estimated at night. Now, the good news is, and the goal is to come in less than in some of the other categories, can't make that promise yet, but part of my effort.
Any additional questions? If not, I look for a motion.
So, move.
Matt made a motion, second by Mike Sprinkle. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Congratulations, Judge. You had a pretty good week.
And next up, we have a request. It was just from the County General for office supplies. There were two claims that were submitted that, and they were missed. The money was in the account in December and it just was not enough there to cover it this year.
So, move.
Tony made a motion to approve, second. Mike Sprinkle, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Health First Indiana, Kelly could not be here today. She let me know, but she, as this, this is the, the grant from, from the Health First Indiana. They can purchase AEDs at a discounted rate and they have been providing those to local entities. They get reimbursed and the checks then are put back into the fund. We're asking to have the reimbursement placed back into the account so that they can continue this program. The amount of the ask is $4,874.88.
Grant money.
This is the new state funding. That's a state budget money, money that has been dispersed to the counties. So, it's.
The other thing is, everybody signs their request and hers is always digitally signed? Yet she's just a few feet away. Could she not sign them in the future?
I mean, typically, I mean, we're trying to get to a digital process, but I could ask her.
Everybody signs theirs. I don't know. Either way.
I guess too, the question I have on this is, I mean, it's great to get, to get these out there within the community and getting, getting them in strategic places where they can be viable. But I think I mentioned this not too long ago. Part of the problem with this is we put them out there, but then, well, no, the batteries go dead. The, I don't know what to call them, but the paddles have to be.
Recertified.
Recertified and, and/or replaced. And I know up in the northern end of the county, they were here recently looking for, I remember, right, somewhere around this kind of money to replace batteries and replace paddles because, I mean, it's great when they're out there, but again, but then they've got to be maintained and there's no funds out there to maintain and keep, keep them going. And they have to be checked once a year. They have to be inspected once a year. And so, I think we're, we've got to make sure that there's another leg of this that gets, that gets looked at in terms of, it's great to get them out there, but we got to have another process and another funding chain by which to keep them out there and keep them operational. Because when it falls upon some of these other little local governments or agencies or whoever, they don't have the money to do it. And I know in the Oden area, they were looking for funds to try to do this and they didn't know. And I actually directed them back to the Health Department to say, look, go back to them and see if they have funds to help you cover this cost. So.
Is this a time sensitive? Like, does she need to purchase these in a certain amount of time?
We've got it with time.
The invoice was already attached with that.
She's already done it?
No, it is in Find Your Christian Church now.
Okay.
And I guess we probably need to ask Kelly if she were here, is the Health Department in charge of tracking these things and maintaining, you know, and checking, make sure that, you know, okay, we've got one here and it needs to be checked to see if the batteries are good, the paddles are still good, you know? Or do they track them and maintain them and kind of keep an eye on them when they put them out there? Or they just give them to somebody and then it's yours to maintain?
I'll reach out to Kelly and see what the process is, how they handle that, and if there's some money and how they're supposed to replace these things down the road. I'll see. Yeah, yes.
Do we want to table this until she can talk about it?
I move that we table this request.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Matt. Right.
And then when you recertify, where do that, where do the funds come from? They do pay for them?
I think maybe, you know, that's, again, it's good to table it and just get, get it.
Additional information.
Get it explained.
And did you have something? Oh, no, I thought Steve was going to say something.
Yeah, no, it's just that, I know that, I believe the fire department, there's some that, I believe it's some local places, and again, they, they don't have the funds. And I think if I remember correctly, the number I was given was around $4,700 or something like that they were looking for to try to get them recertified, batteries replaced.
Well, and that may be something that there's a plan, but the communication wasn't there?
I don't know.
And that's why we need to revisit it.
Yeah. It may be Maryland as well. Could we get a list from the Health Department of exactly how many they have out there throughout the county?
Where?
Yeah. I hope they know.
Yep, I will reach out to Kelly. She's under the weather, so she's recovering. So, I will reach out to her and then we'll look at it next month.
We need to vote on that motion?
We tabled it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Take it.
Yes. We also have a request from the Health Department to appropriate the remaining grant funds for communicable disease testing costs. And the request is $10,959.95. So, moving it out of a grant fund?
So, this is grant dollars that just needed to be appropriated. It did not get done during budget time and it was missed. So, she's asking to have it appropriated now, so she can use it.
Yeah, second.
Tony made the motion, Matt second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so.
Carolyn?
Yes?
Do we, maybe Jen would.
Sorry.
Do we have a request from Lauren Burning, Shelving, there was?
Next month.
Oh, next month.
Yep, okay. So, Kelly has texted me back. She said it is reimbursement money because they are reimbursing the Health Department. So, and she says the Health Department takes care of it. So, if you want to wait for her to get some further understanding, but that's how she's making it.
Okay. Thank you for the response, Kelly. Okay, you have information in your packets from Davis Community Hospital and the Finance Committee. Is there anything else from the audience today? Anything? Yes?
I got a question. Steve, how are we coming on getting the radio system up and going? Is it going yet or where are we at?
Last update I had from Mike was probably two or three weeks ago. I believe Oden, Oden Madison and Plainville all have their mobile units installed. He's still holding on to the handheld units. There's the, the fourth tower that went up. He's waiting on like a, I forget the technical name of it, a receiver from Kenwood, I believe, to go in. And then once that unit arrives, he can put that in, that tower will be ready and then he's going to program all the handhelds, them out. Right now, it's kind of, he's, he's waiting on that item.
Does he have a timeline?
He, he did not at the last update.
Right.
Well, that's, that's the only holdup right now, yeah?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Darren?
Yeah, I just want to share too, and, and getting back to RCE, how many, how many jobs were we anticipating there? I can't remember.
That's right now.
So, I just, we, we had a Westgate Authority Board meeting yesterday. Bryant, now, maybe if you guys want, just a real quick update on some things that are happening there.
Sure.
Bryant, if you want to help me here with, with a couple of things. So, yesterday we learned in terms, I mean, I know we were all focused on the Westgate One project. It's kind of fizzled out because of the fact that the, the CHIPS Act money has fizzled out. And so, I don't have a better way of putting it, but, but anyway, that's, so that's kind of died. But yet, I, I do want to let you know that there are a lot of other things happening in and around. And just learned yesterday of a big project that's happening just north of the Tech Park in Green County, Prometheus. It's a joint effort between Kratos and Raphael. And it'll be a facility to build rocket motor, solid rocket motors. They're, they're looking at, right now, they are purchasing 550 acres just north of, of Westgate, right in Green County. The plan is to have up to 375 employees by 2032, and they're going to start hiring in 2026. Again, average salary is in the facility around $115,000 annual salary on average. So, again, some great, more fantastic news. Again, the site has already been picked and selected and I assume the, the purchasing of that property is underway. And so, things, it's, it's going to be a very, very big economic boom for Green County. But again, being as close and adjacent to Westgate that it is, there's the potential of other contractors and support folks that would come and maybe potentially come into the park. Then also, when you look at too, Martin County is also underway now with a new, Kaki is building a new facility. And it, and it is right in the Tech Park, Bryant? Or is?
It is, yes.
Yeah, it's.
Bryant, can you please go to the microphone? Thank you.
All right. Bryant Niehoff, USTF. We work with the Westgate Authority to manage the development there at the Technology Park. So, yes, to Darren's point about the, the Kaki facility, it's right there on County Line Road in between Davies and Martin County, on the Martin County side, at about one and a half, two acres. It's about a 55,000 square foot facility. You can actually see a rendering of it. Mike, you said you were up at the Westgate area. If you're coming south, turning onto 558 from I-69, Kaki has a new billboard up there with their new, new facility. So, it's really. with their new, new facility, so it's really neat. There's, as you know, Darren mentioned, there's active projects in all three counties there at Westgate, right? So you have the Kaki project in Martin.
Which is about 100, stated yesterday, about 100 employees there. And then also then the new, the new Kratos building.
Yep.
That is underway right north of the, in the, in the Tech Park, right north of the Academy in Davies County. That's another 150 jobs. And then also, yeah, that, so you're looking at 250, you're getting up in close to the 700 employee range, and so it, it just, the, the light bulb yesterday, I mean, we've been talking about housing as being a challenge, not only in Davies County, but in the whole region. And so when you look at the, the number of jobs that all of this is happening and going on at Westgate, it really, really spawns, and I, and I can tell you that S I, SIDC is, is working and has, has been working to try to stimulate and, and foster some growth in, in development, residential development within our region, and it has had a little workshop a couple of weeks ago I went to at Montgomery, and then there's also another workshop that's coming up here, and we're trying to really, really incentivize and to get new developers in the area, because that's what we really, really need. We, as, as a region now, and as, as, as Westgate continues to grow, that whole area up there, we really, really need more housing, plain and simple, and more affordable housing, and so anything we can do, and so if there, if there is any, anybody's listening, and there's anyone out there in the residential housing development market, and they would love to, please, please contact Greg Smith at SIDC and get more information about this upcoming workshop, because it is something that we need to do. And Bryant, too, also, I want, if you're, while you're here, I'd like for you to mention, too, you mentioned about having, what do I want to say? A tour as well as a assembly for all of the local, the three county government officials, so if you want to.
Yeah, no, absolutely, yeah, thank you, Darren. Yeah, so I think Mike Myers maybe mentioned this originally, that it's been a while since there's been kind of a guided tour of the Tech Park. So April 10th, go ahead and maybe pencil that in on your calendars. You're going to be hearing from either myself or Shay in our office here in the, in the next week or so. April 10th, we're going to be, we'd love to host you all up at Westgate, Davies County officials and the other two counties as well. We're going to start with a tour of the installation. For those of you who it's, you know, been a while, or if you haven't been on the installation, it's pretty neat to see. There will be some logistics with that, so we're going to require some information from you, but we're going to start with the tour of the installation, a tour of the Tech Park, some of the projects that you've heard about, and then we'll feed you, we'll have lunch, and we're going to talk about just, you know, how we can continue to keep things going and firing on all cylinders up at Westgate, working together between the three counties and the authority, so, thank you, Darren, yeah.
Any other questions?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Bryant.
Yeah, thank you all.
Exciting news. Yes. Is there anything else from council? If not, I look for a motion to adjourn, please.
So move.
Mike Sprinkle, motion, second by Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you all, appreciate it.
I'll go out here for a second, I'll be back in a second.
Sure.
Hey, Judge? Judge Murray? Where's your son going to school?
Yes?
Where's your son going to school? Where's he going to go yet? Are you?
Congratulations.
Yeah, I know a guy with 40 acres that will develop a house.
You did?